Call a meeting to order. Meeting of October 17th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And the first item of business is the Order of Business. I'm aware of two additions under Administration and Finance, Item C, Reports. We would add an Item 6 to report on the request for proposal for prosecutor services. And then an Item 7 would be a report on growth in the city primarily on residential lots. The city administrator will be giving those reports. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? If not, with those two additions, would there be a motion to approve the Order of Business?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, say nay. Motion carries. The next item then is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Now would there be a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, now we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. We'll go to Tab 4 and we'll hear the financial report.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I'll highlight a few items from the financial report through September. We'll begin with the general fund report. With 75 percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3 million and we're 98 percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees is 83 percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues we receive from state and local governments, such as highway distribution tax and oil production tax, and a 65 percent collected compared to budget. We did receive $500,000 in oil production tax money in July and $1 million in September due to our increase in mining-related jobs in 2011 to 9.2 percent. These amounts have been moved to our new Oil Impact Fund, which is where we will account for all revenues associated with oil impact. Our licenses, fees, and services include such things as building permit revenue and oil royalties and a 63 percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up 45 percent over last year. Our municipal court fines, which are also included in this line, are up 20 percent more than last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment, we have sold $1.5 million of city lots through September. Our total general fund revenues equal $8 million through September and we're 86 percent collected compared to budget. In our general fund expenses, general government, which includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and grounds, is 76 percent expended compared to budget. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is 69 percent expended compared to budget. Our engineering and streets is 65 percent expended compared to budget. And our cultural services, which includes the museum and forestry, is 69 percent expended compared to budget. Our contingency and reserve includes the West River Community Center major maintenance reserve and our contingency that includes our 20 percent share of the regional transit building. Our total general fund expenses equal $6.4 million through September and we're 68 percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, this slide shows our water and wastewater funds, which we combined in 2011 to better reflect lake operations. Our revenue is $5 million through September, which is 99 percent collected compared to budget and 34 percent more than last year. This large increase in revenue in 2011 is due to bulk water sales at our water vendor. Our expenses total $3.8 million, which is 68 percent collected compared to budget.
Mrs. Johnson, before you go any further, can you back, oh, you don't have to back up, but the slide before this last one here, engineering and street, the general fund expenditures, you got 65 percent. What is the other 35 percent for the parking lot or what are the workers there to do on that?
Well, that would be including our engineering department, so it would have payroll expenses and those type of things in them as well.
All right, thank you.
Our solid waste fund also shows an increase in revenue due to added accounts for both residential and commercial growth. Our revenue is $2.1 million through September, which is 96 percent collected compared to budget and 21 percent more than last year. Our expenses are $1.6 million, which is 63 percent expended compared to budget. In our sales tax reports, our 1 percent sales tax fund shows we received $503,000 of revenue in September, which is up 38 percent for the year. We have reforecasted our sales tax revenue projection to reflect a 30 percent increase over last year. Our expenses include $571,000 paid towards job creation and senior programs and $800,000 towards the Badlands Activity Center pledge. In our half percent sales tax, we received $252,000 of revenue in September, which is also up 38 percent for the year. This slide also reflects a reforecast of a 30 percent increase over last year. Our expenses include $503,000 towards the West River Community Center bond. In our hospitality tax, we received $92,000 of revenue in September, which is up 34 percent over last year. We have also reforecast hospitality tax revenue projection to reflect a 30 percent increase over last year. Our expenses total $422,000 and that includes our Badlands Activity Center pledge payment, the CBB Special Events Grant, and their subsidy, the Parks and Rec Lighting Grant, and our Chamber membership. In our occupancy tax breakdown, shows the revenues and expenditures total $367,000 through September. This is a 74 percent increase over last year. All occupancy tax revenues collected minus a small admin fee are paid to the CBB monthly. I've also updated the accrual for the occupancy tax, so it's using the same accrual as all the other sales tax worksheets, which means all the balances match throughout the binder that you receive. In our street projects report, we received $105,000 in revenue and we've expended $847,000 towards those projects through September. The reforecast column in your report shows the increase in the 50 percent share of the 1 percent sales tax that will be expected due to higher sales tax revenue. Our development impact fee program is broken down into a residential and commercial schedule. These schedules show the impact fee projects that have been approved and the funds available for future projects. The residential program stands at a negative $98,000 at the end of September. The timing of construction compared to special assessments received will help alleviate this negative balance. The commercial schedule includes three projects which are up for approval this evening. If all are approved, the balance available for future commitments will stand at $1,078,000. We've also included the 2011 budget reforecast, highlighting the general fund revenues that have been reforecast since the budget was approved last September. Those are some of the highlights of the financial statements. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Johnson, on the impact fees, when we talked about the residential having a negative balance of $98,000, the way I understand that is, is that we've in a sense approved $4.1 million of impact projects and our own self-imposed limit is $4 million, so we're just, that's where the negative comes in, that we've approved $100,000, roughly $100,000 more than we've authorized ourselves.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Then, you know, through September, we have, in round numbers, 1.6 million, we have a $1.6 million negative balance really in the impact fee capital projects.
Correct.
It stands right today. I'm going to suggest to my fellow commissioners that Mrs. Johnson and myself and Mr. Kessel, I think we have to look at this, not only where we're at through September, but where we think that balance is likely to be at year-end. I don't think it would be prudent to go into year-end with a large negative balance there, so I think we're going to have to transfer some monies from one or more of our other funds into this fund. And in a sense, it's a loan to the fund because as long as our special assessments are paid back, we collect this money. But we have to finance the program from somewhere. We've already put $1 million into this fund from the half-cent sales tax. But it's going to be something greater than $1.6 million by year-end.
And I did speak with Ms. Binstock as far as when we would know what amount we expect to receive in the assessments for 2012, which we normally receive in January and February. We'll have those numbers, numbers in about three weeks, so we'll have an idea of what kind of cash we'll be seeing come in right at the beginning of the year as well.
Right, and if my memory serves me correctly, I think in the 2012 budget, we did budget a million dollar transfer from the half-cent sales tax into this fund. But I think we have to come to the commission with some sort of plan here and do it prior to year-end. Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, I would request that we include Engineer Soren because he may be aware of projects that are yet to be submitted to the commission in that meeting, so we get an accurate idea of expenses as well.
Okay. Does that sound reasonable to the commission that we do that? Okay. All right, we'll do that. Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Johnson? All right, thank you. All right, we'll go to Item B, which is Hospitality and Lodging Tax Ordinance, and this is Ordinance 1426. Mr. Coling, do you have anything else to add to this ordinance?
Mr. President, one preliminary matter, I guess, is you do need to have a vote to accept the financial report.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Would there be a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, now we'll vote then. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Now we're on Item B. Mr. Coling, is there anything you'd want to add by way of introduction for this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President Commissioners, the proposed ordinance before you makes a couple of changes to the city's, way the city handles occupancy tax and hospitality tax funds. This is on for second reading and final passage. There have not been any changes to the proposed ordinance since first reading. Just to review the ordinance for you a little bit, currently, the entire occupancy tax and a portion of the hospitality tax collections are dedicated to the Convention and Visitors' Bureau as a direct operating subsidy. This ordinance would eliminate that direct operating subsidy as a matter of ordinance, and as my understanding, the city is looking at developing a multi-year funding agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau to provide them with some security and consistency in funding as our occupancy tax and hospitality tax numbers vary year to year. If this ordinance is adopted, it would also make a change to the Visitors Committee. By statute, a Visitors Committee is required to be an advisory body to the City Commission, advising on ways in which to spend the hospitality and occupancy tax funds. Current ordinance provides that the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors is a standing Visitors Committee, and this ordinance would put that Visitors Committee at the discretion of this board, the City Commission. You would appoint that Visitors Committee, the same as you do for other appointments within the city. Be happy to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Coling. Any comments or questions? Now at this time, we would take comments regarding this proposed ordinance. Anybody that wishes to comment from the public may do so. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Is there anyone from the public? Is no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by city commissioners or other city staff? If not, is there a motion regarding this item?
Chairman, I'll move for passage of attorney finding ordinance number 1426.
Okay, we have the motion to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1426. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion by commissioners? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll go to Item C, and that is to hear the reports by the city administrator. Mr. Kessel?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. The first item on the report, I am very happy to announce the hiring of Dustin Dossinger as the police chief here in Dickinson. Mr. Dossinger has had several years of experience within our police department. He is a native of Southheart and has called the Dickinson area home for the vast majority of his life. We are very excited to be working with Chief Dossinger, and he went through probably the most open hiring process the city of Dickinson has ever done for a police chief, and proved himself to be the best candidate for the job, and I'm looking forward to working with him in the future. So congratulations, Chief Dossinger. The next item that I have is an annexation request that's been made on the south side. You all have a map in front of you that shows where that is for our audience that is watching on TV. The land area that we're going to be talking about is right in this area here, just outside of our city limits, on the south side, to the west of Highway 22, which runs right down the heart of the city there. The annexation request is for about 180 acres or so. The northeast corner of that property is already in the city limits, and they would like to start development of this project as soon as possible. The vast majority of it is residential. It does include, at this time, some R1, R2, and R3 lots and some commercial that would border Highway 22. So there is also some interest in developing the land immediately south of there, and we have asked, city staff has asked those two developers to get in contact with one another so that common links like streets, especially those running north and south, infrastructure, and maybe even park development can all be done in a coordinated fashion. So city staff is getting together to talk about this annexation. It obviously provides an opportunity. There's a great many land that is just outside of the city limits on the east side of Highway 22. For those of you who are familiar with that area, if you travel north and south on Highway 22, there's quite a mix of property uses in that area. So we'll bring forward a recommendation to this body probably at your next city commission If there's no questions, then the next item is an update on the CBB Board. As we're all aware, all but one of the board members has resigned from that committee. One has provisionally rescinded his resignation and has come aboard to at least allow basic services to be conducted. Expenses are being paid, the payroll is being run, so that was excellent for him to do that. I have met with the remaining board member, Ms. Elaine Myron, and we've talked about reconstituting that board, how to do so, and she's working diligently on finding replacements or at least contacting people to replace members of that board. I want to reiterate that the CBB Board is an independent legal entity from the city of Dickinson. We are advisors or consultants in this process, and we hope to have a reconstituted board together so that the city commission can ratify its membership in the near future. I'm not sure if that's going to be two weeks or four or six, but that certainly is the goal we're working towards. Then that board would move forward with hiring a director, and that's the process we're moving forward on. I would just like to add to Attorney Coling's comments about the ordinance. It did talk about the Visitors Committee, that has been in existence for a great many years. It did remove, the ordinance language does remove the CBB from that ordinance, but what it did do is move it to the agreement. So it's very clear in the agreement that we have proposed that the CBB Board would be the Visitors Committee. Those two are one and the same. They have been in the past, and it's the intention to continue that process into the future, as evidenced by its inclusion in that agreement. So we're working hard with the remaining board member to try to reconstitute that board and have a functioning CBB within the near future, so. That would conclude my report on CBB unless there's questions. You do have, by the way, some information that's been provided, some of their audited financials and such. If you have questions on that, I'll certainly be willing to try and answer those for you as well. The next item then is an Elks building update. The 90-day notice, that timeframe has been exhausted, so the time is up. There is no extensions being extended. I was contacted by Mr. Brinkman. He does want to resolve this issue as amicably as possible. We have set up a meeting this week to meet with Mr. Brinkman and hopefully resolve the issue. The decision that the city has to make is one of, do we pursue our interests through the court process and actually litigate, or is there another process we can go through to try and transition that ownership of the building? Because we believe that it should come back to the city unencumbered, and there currently is over $2 million in encumbrances that appear to exist on that building. We are working with outside counsel to try and resolve this situation, and hopefully at by the next committee, or by the next commission meeting, I'll have another update with you or for you. If there's no questions there, then I'd like to move on to the additions to the agenda, the prosecution RFP. As you know, the state's attorney rescinded his contract with the city of Dickinson to provide those services with the city of Dickinson, which meant that we are seeking any interested party or firm who'd like to provide prosecutorial services for the city of Dickinson. There is an RFP that's been released today. It's on our website, and we are, we hope to close this process around November 11th, so we'll have all interested parties stating their interest in a written form, and then make a decision and recommendation to this body on who will serve as our prosecutor for 2012 and beyond. And a copy of that RFP was provided to you. The last item that I have then is on the planner side and growth. This was a topic that we introduced at our last meeting. We talked about possibilities of hiring an additional planner. The Stark County is interested in hiring part-time or hiring a consultant planner that would be hired by the city of Dickinson, and then the discussion was, we have a couple options with the remaining time. One of those is to use them for city purposes, and the other is to facilitate maybe some of the smaller cities and counties that surround Dickinson in southwest North Dakota to help them through their growth issues as best we can. I provided you a handout. This is actually a PowerPoint presentation that I've made several times within the city to interested businesses and organizations, and I'd like to skip over until you get to page, I think it's 35 of the document. So I think the fourth to last page. All of the slides before that walk everybody through kind of a planning 101 document, talks about what a plat is, and then the remainder of the document is actually plats that have been submitted. And I first want to commend the city commission for its foresight in hiring a planner. Obviously, by the amount of pages in this document, you can see that it's been well worth doing so. By an estimate that you see in the second column, it's titled Planner Estimate Using Assessor Data, we have 1,400 undeveloped residential lots currently within the city of Dickinson's municipal boundaries. About 1,100 of those are likely to be developed. The reason for the 300 decline is because some of these properties will be bought by the adjacent property owner, they'll use two lots and only put one house up. Some of them may be undesirable next to a electrical substation or something of that nature, so if they're developed, it's going to take some time or they never will be developed. So once you factor those out, you're left with about 1,100 likely to be developed. And then if you further break that down into the residential classes that we have, R1 being single-family homes, about 70 percent of those are likely to be developed into single-family homes, so out of 1,100, that means about 770 R1 lots. If you take that times a population factor of about 2.5, that means there'll be about 1,600 residents capable of living in 770 R1 lots. If you continue down, then 20 percent would be developed as R2, that means 220 lots, and we used a population factor of five. Once you get to the R2 level, it becomes a little bit fuzzy because in an R2 classification, you can have everything from duplexes up to 12plexes, I believe, in that class, so, or 10plexes. So you could have all 220 lots developed as duplexes or all 220 lots developed as 10plexes. So there is, we tried to be on the conservative side and took a population factor of five, which means about 1,000 people in R2 zoned lots. And then the remaining lots would be 10 percent developed as R3 or high-density residential. These can be very large apartment complexes. We have a submittal for, I think, 442plexes right now on the table. So these are very high-density lots, or could be anyways. And so there could be 110 of those lots, times a population factor of 10 means about 1,100 residents. So if you walk your way through that, of those 1,400 lots, you're looking at a population gain of around 3,700 residents with lots that are already platted within our city limits. If you look on the first column of that page, that represents my quick calculation on what we've done in the very recent past. So all of the plats that are in this presentation, there's about 576 R1 lots, plus there's a proposal for 35 acres, and that proposal is the one that we mentioned tonight, that south side annexation. And there's 131 R2 lots available, plus 45 acres of proposed lots on the south side. And then there's 18 R3 lots, plus 11 acres on the south side. So you can see that of those 1,400 lots, about half or better have come within the last year. So this kind of gives you an idea of why the planning department, engineering, and so forth, has been so busy in working on all of the plats that are represented in this document and in trying to manage just simply this amount of lot data. So I give you this information to help you decide on using the, what we believe to be a half-time planner for internal purposes or external purposes. As a reminder, Roosevelt Custer has submitted a grant. They would like to utilize the half-time and would probably pay for that through the use of that grant if we're so inclined. So if you add the two revenue streams together between Stark County and Roosevelt Custer, we could add somebody at no cost to the city. I'm not sure if that's in our best interest or not. If you look at this type of growth, and we can't predict the future, but certainly it appears as though our growth is going to exceed next year what it did this year. It's simply my opinion, based on, you know, data we're seeing. So this is all just for your information tonight. We're not asking for a decision to be made this evening. I continue to contact Stark Development Commission members to find out some details, and hopefully we can bring a contract before the board here shortly that you can review, and at that time is when we'll need a decision on what to do with the remaining time of a planner. So are there any questions? So are there any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson.
I have really strong feelings about this, and I'd really like to see this move, I'd like to see this move as fast as it can. I think that we need the other half position in the city here. I think we need it on city staff. I think the half a position for the county will be a great help to them. It'll just be a great help to our greater community. But I only probably know half or less about how busy so many of our staff is, and we need that other position now, I believe. I'd like to see us start advertising immediately and work out the details of the arrangement with Stark County as we're advertising, because I know that doesn't happen fast. So, you know, action tonight, at least some direction tonight for Mr. Kessel. I'd really like to see this move forward as quickly as possible.
We didn't budget for that position in 2012.
We did not budget for that. That's correct. President Johnson.
So if we do this, how would we handle the dollars?
As you heard in Finance Director Johnson's report, we did get dollars from the state because of our employment percentages. Much of those dollars have gone unbudgeted in 2011. So we could certainly pick up the costs in 2011 using those dollars, and we believe we could do the same in 2012.
Except we did budget those revenues into our normal budget in 2012. You may have some excess funds in 2011, but, you know, you're only down to two and a half months left in 2011.
We can certainly bring a proposal to the commission on how we could fund that at our next commission meeting.
One thing we have to remember, if we add a half position that's dedicated to the county, Mr. Cortan is going to be supervising that position. He's going to be giving direction to that effort with the county. So he's not going to have 100% of his time left for the city. I don't know what the number would be, but it's going to be something less than 100%. So we also need to replace that effort somehow for a person that is already very, very busy.
I'd also like to remind the commission that our comprehensive planning process is going to take a great deal of time, and Mr. Cortan is the lead staff on that as well.
Mr. President, I would agree with Commissioner Jackson on his assessment of this here. You know, right now, I would think that the City of Dickinson is somewhat, maybe a little bit ahead of that giant ball that's coming down towards us. I think this will only help us, at least for this part of the planning process, keep us ahead of that ball. Once we get run over by it, then we may be like some other communities in North Dakota that, you know, that just don't know what to do anymore. And I think this would be a good start for us. I think both this county and the city are going to get valuable, well, get our money back from this individual.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Well, Mr. Kessel, I think, you know, if you're going to suggest this, you've got to also find some additional revenue that we haven't recognized in the 2012 budget to help offset the cost.
We'll bring that to the commission.
Anything else, Mr. Kessel, or any questions, comments for him?
concludes my report.
Okay. Well, we do have a 5 o'clock timetable agenda item, and that's to hear a presentation from the Vanguard Company regarding the reevaluation of city commercial parcels. And here representing Vanguard is Bob, is it Ailer?
Very good.
Mr. Ailer, so welcome, and please come to the podium, and we'll hear your presentation.
First of all, I did send a steps in a reappraisal. Did you all get a copy of that? If not, I do have some copies with me.
It is in the commission booklet.
Okay. Well, Mr. President, commissioners, my name is Bob Ailer. I am president of Vanguard Appraisals. Vanguard did a reappraisal for the City of Dickinson back, yeah, I believe, in 2001. We did the work in 1999 and 2000, and I believe you started using those values for the assessments of January 1st, 2001. Since that time, a lot has happened up here. I was just speaking with your assessor's office. Right now, they're looking to increase your commercial land 300%, or somewhere in that area, where that's what the sales indicate that you need. The assessment process is called a cost approach to value. You basically analyze sales of the land, you determine the land value, you calculate a replacement cost of every structure, and then you can compare that replacement cost to the sales and arrive at a value. Right now, your sales are above the replacement cost that is calculated on your properties. So first of all, all your properties need to have a new replacement cost calculated. Needs to be current. The dynamics that you have in your market up here have caused, you know, it causes costs to exceed what it would be in other areas. Labor rates are higher here than they are elsewhere in the country. Even the profit that the builders expect when they build something, there's such a demand that they build a high-profit margin in. That all affects the replacement cost of a property. So a building built in Dickinson today is going to cost considerably more than the same building built in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So that's one of the first things that we would do is calculate the cost. We would get the information on the newer buildings in the area and update the cost of all the buildings. A reappraisal project, we would re-inspect all the properties. The assessor's office has been very busy since last project, since your boom has happened up here. I know there are certain building permits that they have not even been able to go out and look at. So you probably have a lot of new construction that's not even on the assessment rolls. So that would be another goal of a revaluation, to make sure that everything is on the assessment rolls. The one sheet I gave you, these are the sales that have occurred, commercial properties that have sold in Dickinson this year. Now, you have confidential sales in North Dakota, and therefore I could not name which properties they are. But the first three sales on that sheet, you will see that the current assessment is approximately 1/5 of the sale price. Well, I looked into these properties, spoke with the assessor. These are properties that were originally built for local warehousing. Now they've been consumed by the oil industry. So it's obvious what the oil industry has done to a certain segment of your market. Now you take a look at the other six sales above that, and they are roughly at about 2/3 of the sale price. So those are the other more general commercials in the area. So they are lagging behind, but you have a dynamic of where one segment of your commercial population has increased in value more than another segment. So the proposal, what we've been speaking with your city about, is that we would come in, do another revaluation, get all your costs, all your obsolescence figures, all your depreciation figures, all your land values, back in to be a fair reflection of the market, so that your values are at market value. The proposal, the contract that I did send to the city, would be that we would do the project, we would start doing the work in 2013, we would work in 2014, and the project would be completed in time for the 2015 assessment. Do you have any questions about the project?
Did we discuss with you at all the possibility of starting sooner, starting in 2012? Or is...
I noticed in the handout that was given, that that's the timeframe that was given to you. Actually, our work inventory is quite full throughout that time. So 2015 really is about the soonest we could get this completed.
A sooner timeframe certainly seems desirable.
We have been working with your assessor's office. I had a gentleman up here earlier this year, and we are working with your assessor's office trying to update the values in the meantime. We're going to be working with the office to get the land values up. We can, there are called manual levels, where we can increase the cost and get the values more in line with the market. It does not fine-tune the, some of the inconsistencies, but it does get the values up to be reflective of the market value, so that the city would not get equalization orders from the state. So we could work with the city on that part of it until the project is completed.
Other questions or comments?
Okay. I did give you the handout that does, I'm not going to bore you with the details, but this basically has the steps that we would follow when we do the revaluation. And it's the process, but I didn't think you wanted me to go through that this evening, so I'll not bore you with that.
Most of us can read, so we'll be okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to tab five, which, public safety, and we'll hear from the Fire Department,
President Johnson, commissioners, and I'll present the activities of the Dickinson Fire Department for the month of September. September Incident Response came in at 22 calls for service compared to 12 for 2010. Quite a difference between those two years, but down one from 2009, 23 in 2009. Year-to-date, January 1 through September 30, we're at 218 compared to the 171 last year, 156 in '09. Again, still tracking about 28% ahead of 2010, about 40% ahead of over 2009. Fire Prevention and Public Education, it's a little bit of a different month for us. As you'll see, 20 routine inspections, 38 follow-ups, 16 construction, that's onsite walking through the construction, of course. 43 miscellaneous, which includes the fire suppression systems tests and fire alarm systems tests, fire drills, complaint investigations. The suppression and alarm systems tests are very time-consuming with some of the projects we have going on in Dickinson right now due to the size of the project. It's not unrealistic to say that one project may take an inspector an entire afternoon or an entire morning just to get through the fire alarm systems on the acceptance test. We saw quite a bit of activity in that as buildings and projects are nearing that stage of construction this time of year, and that's what skewed our routine inspections quite a bit. They were in this, they were out in the field, they were doing their jobs, but that category is where their time was spent, as you can see by the graph. September Activities, we completed the annual pump testing of all our fire department apparatus. September 11th, the Fire Department was involved in activities remembering that date at Dickinson State University, Roosevelt, and at Hagan Junior High. Two of our members, Deb Barrows and Mark Selly, attended the International Association of Arson Investigators Conference in Fargo. Dickinson Fire Department put on a presentation at the Olson Possum on September 20th at Dickinson State University concerning our fire training site. I believe it was well-received, if we can gauge that by the amount of questions that were asked afterwards concerning the training site and concerning the department. Regional Fire School was held at our Fire Department, Oil Field Emergencies Fire Training, Regional Fire School on September 17th. I'll show you a couple pictures of that in just a minute. We took part, again, with the local area fire service, fire departments, along with local law enforcement. We took part in the Battle of the Badges, September 14th and 15th. Again, it was successful for United Blood Services. Our staff presented classes at the Dickinson High School for their career classes, and then took part in putting on extinguisher demonstrations at St. Luke's Nursing Home, lectures for the DSU Freshmen Seminar. That's an ongoing process of partnership with us, with Dickinson State University, in educating their freshmen. It's especially important with the international students. We've recognized in fire drills that there is some difficulty with the international students sometimes understanding what that's all about in the residence halls, and that's one of the reasons we've partnered with them on this freshman seminar. And of course, fire drills at all city schools were conducted. Regional Fire School highlighted some of our live-fire props. And again, the purpose of that regional fire school and of our training site isn't to train firefighters to be oilfield firefighters. That's the Red Adair Company, and boots and coots, and wild well control, and outfits like that. What we train them is what they can't do, quite honestly, how much they can't do. Sure, we have some live-fire props that they are able to work with, especially the tank prop, which was what the Kidder Fire Grant put together for us. It shows them just how intense those fires can be. Shows them just how many resources need to be available. And in some cases, what we can see from the students that are involved, it's probably the first time they've ever been on the hose line together as a team. This particular regional fire school was attended by six area fire departments, six different fire departments, 23 firefighters total. It was a very successful school. A couple pictures of the September 11th activities at DSU. And right at the end of September, we received a check from the North Dakota Insurance Department for $64,568.20, which will be returned to the General Fund from the Insurance Premium Rebate Program, compares to the $60,666 in 2010, and $58,000 in 2009. And just recently, we received notification that the ISO evaluation of our city was completed, and we'll be bringing more information back to you at a different meeting on some of the internals of that. We were successful in retaining our Class IV designation, however. And the rating schedule, which I think is important to show you at a future meeting, Class IV is bounded by 60.00 to 69.99. That's the point range that designates a Class IV. We maintained a Class IV by .75. So we'll bring some of those things to you on what we can look at, and how we can do better and strengthen that position. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief Seavock. Any comments or questions for the chief? All right. Thank you. And then we hear from the Police Department, and this would be Chief Dossinger. Right, you're officially chief, no?
Officially since 8 o'clock this morning, I guess.
Since 8 o'clock this morning. Okay.
I have before you, September 2011 Dickinson Police Report. Going to start out with traffic safety. As you can see, in the month of September, we had a total of 98 traffic accidents. Eight of those were injury-related, and 18 of those were hit-and-run accidents. Kind of a comparison from 2010 to 2011 regarding our accidents. You can see that we were up by four accidents from 2010 to 2011. Our injury-related accidents were also up four. Our property accidents were up 30. So we did have an increase of 38 traffic accidents, comparison from last year to this year. We did conduct a total of 575 traffic stops for the month. There were a total of 397 citations issued and 206 warnings issued. Comparison of calls, for the last month, we did have 2,152 calls for service. Last year, for the month of September, we had 1,602 calls for service. And year-to-date, kind of charting that to give you a picture of what we're seeing, we're up about 3,173 calls from last year to this time, to this year from this time. As you can see by this chart, we really started seeing the increase in our calls this year from about February to July is when we seen the increase. Now it's kind of leveled out for the month Now it's kind of leveled out for the months of August and September, and they're holding pretty steady. As you know, you read in the paper, I've heard, from October 7th to 11th, we had a rash of vandalism in our community. There were several vehicles that had the windows shot out with airsoft guns or BB guns. There are about 42 vandalism reported from October 7th to 11th. That investigation has been concluded on that, on those incidents, and charges are forthcoming by the middle of this week. There'll be a juvenile referral made. There were also another rash of vandalism that occurred over this weekend that we had reported to us. That case is also nearing completion, and there'll also be an arrest made by the end of the week on those as well. We're also happy to report that our Badlands Crime Dropper Program is up and running. We got the board reestablished for that. We have several businesses in our community that are willing to help us and donate money to that program. The number is 4567754. If there's anybody in our community that has any information that they might want to report relating to a crime that they may have witnessed, that they help us solve, we greatly appreciate it. And in future meetings, we'll have a presentation from Senior Commissioner Ron Van Doren on that program. I just want to back up here. You can kind of see we're going to start doing more of this mapping program. You can see those pin dots on that map. Those are the locations where those vandalism occurred. And what we're going to try to do is use a mapping overlay and system so we know where we need to target our patrol, especially on the weekends when we are seeing more vandalism like this occurring. As Chief Seavock reported, we did also participate in the Battle of the Badges in September, as the Police Department does every September at the Battle of the Badges. We usually give away a little tyke's car, and this year you can see this happy little three-year-old that was a recipient of that. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or questions for Chief Dossinger? Mr. Kessel?
We've had both Chief Seavock and Chief Dossinger come up, talk about Battle of the Badges, and nobody has talked about breaking rights.
Well, unfortunately, the fire department beat us again. I think we're going to have to give them arrest powers.
Okay. And how many years is that in a row now?
Two, I believe, correctly.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be careful, Chief Seavock, there under new leadership at the Dickinson PD.
Okay, we're going to move to Tab Six, Public Works, and I think, Mr. Crotton, I think you have all these items, so we'll let you start.
Mr. President, fellow Commissioners, Cook Meadow Hill, Second Platte, this is a rezoning. Mike Cook is requesting a rezon petition to go from Ag to R1, R2, and R3. The R1 lots are Block 1, lots 1 through 10. The R2 lots are Block 2, lots 8 through 12, and Block 3, lots 1 through 6. The R3 zoning is proposed to be for Blocks 2, lots 1 through 7. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval of the petition. There have been no changes since the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Crotton. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance? If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public. Any comments by other city staff or city commissioners? There are none. Is there a motion regarding Ordinance 1427?
Move Reprove Second Reading Final Passage, Ordinance 1427?
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Frenzel, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and the motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is rezoning for Diamond Acres. The applicant is David Kitson. He's requesting approval for a rezon petition. Diamond Acres Platte is generally located southerly of 21st Street East and westerly of 10th Avenue East. The applicant's requesting the following rezonings. Blocks 10 and 11 from R2 to CC, Block 17, lots 1 through 12 from R2 to R1, and Block 4, lots 1 through 5 from R3 to R2. The Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval, and there's been no changes since the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Crotton. Again, if there's any member of the public that would like to comment regarding Ordinance 1428, you may do so now. Step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Any comments by city commissioners or other city staff? Is there a motion regarding Ordinance 1428?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Takes us to Item C.
The next item is the Development Impact Fee Project. The city has received a request from Dennis Miller for development impact fees for the extension of 22nd Avenue East. The total project expense is approximately $165,000. The city's portion would be $82,500. City staff recommends approval. The affected lots are lots 2 and 4 of Block 1 of Heathley Edition and lots 3 and 4 of Block 1 East Dale Fourth Subdivision. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Crotton. You've heard his recommendation. Do you have any comments or questions? Mr. Coleen, do you have a resolution number for this one?
Mr. President, this would be Resolution 60-2011, 6-0.
6-0, okay. Any comments or questions? Not, is there a motion regarding this item?
No move to approve. I'll second.
We have the motion to approve in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is the Development Impact Fee Project. It's for Porter Second Subdivision. The city has received a request from Quad Pro LLC for development impact fees to be divided into two phases to complete water, sewer, and street improvements. Specifically, Phase 1 would consist of underground utilities of water and sewer from 29th Street East and West between Highway 22 and 4th Avenue, 4th Avenue East and Sim Street. And the street improvements for the first phase would be along Sim Streets between 26 and 29th Street. The second phase is the street improvements from 29th Street East and West from the interstate Highway 22 to 4th Street. And the lots affected are represented in your packet materials in the enclosed map. The total project cost is approximately $2 million. The city has received three protests of the project. Two of them are included in your packet materials. The other one was given to you today. The city engineer has recommended approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Crotton. Mr. Coleen, because this particular request is going to be more controversial, I think Mr. Kessel had asked if you would explain the process again to the commission. Are you prepared to do so?
I can do so, Mr. President, and I can go into whatever detail you would like, but to give you the brief overview on the process, Development Impact Fee Program is composed of several stages. Tonight is the first step in that process, and if you would approve the application as it has been submitted to you, you would be approving this project for development and for participation in the Development Impact Fee Program. Now, just because the project is approved for Development Impact Fee Programs does not put an assessment on the property. That actual assessment comes at a later stage after the project has been completed, and we have a final cost of what the project takes and how much the city is contributing to that project. Once those costs are firmed up, the city engineer's office does a calculation of which properties are benefited by that project and parcels out the cost either on a linear foot basis or per parcel basis throughout the development impact area. Once the city engineer's office has done that, that estimate goes before the city's Special Assessment Commission, and the city's Special Assessment Commission basically does the same thing. They hear protests to the individual assessments. They make sure that each of the properties that are assessed do benefit from the project and benefit in the amount that they are assessed. Benefited, or being a benefited property is the key term within special assessment districts. The city and the Special Assessment Commission particularly has to determine that each of those properties are benefited in the amount that they are assessed. Once the Special Assessment Commission determines that the properties have been benefited in the amount as estimated by the city engineer's office, that estimate will come before you as a city commission, and you would have the same opportunity at that time to hear protests to specific assessments and make sure the properties are benefited in the amount that they are assessed. If you approve that assessment, then those assessments will be placed upon the properties and collected in the manner of special assessments. So again, this is the first stage of the process. If you approve the application, you're just approving the project to go forward, and the actual dollar amount for each property to be assessed would be determined at a later time. Be happy to go into more detail or address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Comments or questions by Commissioners?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jackson?
It may be a fine point, but, Mr. Coleen, I believe that it's fair to say that while it's common for city engineering staff to prepare numbers, that those are really a recommendation to that Assessment Commission, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. The final determination is actually made by this commission, by the city commission, and the Special Assessment Commission has delegated authority in order to consider that to make a recommendation.
Thank you.
So if we approve this tonight, the application for, or the resolution here relating to the Development Impact Fee, we're in no way approving any preliminary special assessments.
That is correct. The special assessments can only be approved at a later date once the final costs are known, and the Special Assessment Commission has a chance to determine the degree to which properties are benefited.
Because I think some of the preliminary information that we've seen has already caused, I mean, those of us who have looked at it, and I don't know if all five of us have looked at it yet, but those of us that have looked at it, I think, have some real concerns over the allocation of the cost of this project to some of the existing properties.
And saying it another way...
Yeah, you can say it more eloquently than I can.
I doubt it, but saying it another way, what we're really doing tonight is we're approving that boundary. It's our call, so to speak, with recommendation of staff as to what properties we think may benefit.
That is correct. You have jurisdiction authority to determine what the service area is or the development area is, and those boundaries can be drawn in whatever manner that you deem best as the elected officials of the city.
I too, as I look at some of the preliminary figures, I have concerns also, and, you know, I think we need some philosophical discussion as a city as to how we're looking at some of these assessments.
Well, and I think when you receive letters in protest, again, the letters that we received weren't in protest of the development itself. There was not one letter that said that they didn't want the development to move forward. Their questioning was in regards to the amount that would be assessed based on their perceived benefit and actual benefit. And I think that's where we have to have the reassurance, is that they are truly all benefiting and that they are being appropriately assessed for that benefit, not to an excess. And there's not a letter that we received that didn't want to have some skin in the game and didn't perceive that there was some value to their property. It's that fine line of where does that number lie?
There are two resolutions here. If we're to act on them, I'm assuming since there's two, we have to act on them separately. We think the one is for Phase 1 and the other for Phase 2? Or is there only one?
There's only one, so...
Okay, there's two phases, but only... No, I see two resolutions in my...
Yeah, I have two resolutions as well.
It is a Phase 1, Phase 2 project, so you would act on each resolution separately.
Okay, and it'd be 61 and 62? Okay, well, we'll do something just a little bit out of the ordinary before we act on these, because, you know, I know at least, there's at least one of the concerned property owners here, and if you would like to speak or have some questions you'd like to ask, if you're one of the affected properties, feel free to come to the podium and kind of engages in a discussion if you have any questions at this point or comments. Just identify yourself and...
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Brown, representing Brown Properties. We did have questions, obviously, if you saw the letter we got in regard to the assessment, it looked pretty cut and dried. Listening to some of the things tonight, it looks like there's more discussion and more, possibly more input from us as far as what the true value would be to our property with both Phase 1 and Phase 2. I guess our request would just be that there's open communication and that we've got advance notice of what's coming down the pipe, because it's a tough turnaround when you're doing business, other things, and you have to try to tackle these issues also. I'd answer any questions that you have for us.
I'd say the way you described it is accurate, and I think, Mr. Crotton, maybe you know, when it comes to noticing for the Special Assessment Commission and when it comes for the city, the affected property owners, I assume, are written letters and...
Mr. President, with respect to your question, yes. As part of the ordinance, we're required to notify all the people that would be affected by certified mailing. It's attached within the documents that I have here with an estimated value. The ordinance, if I recall right, requires a preliminary estimate of the total cost of that in order for the commission to decide, you know, where that boundary would lie. And with this, we've included that. I think it's typical that the city has included an estimation of what that cost would be, just so each affected party is aware of the potential cost that could come there. It's an estimate, it's not a definitive cost, but for informing purposes and to be completely open, we have included that, and I believe that's been the standard process that we've done in the past.
And do you recall, does the ordinance specify how many days in advance of, like, Special Assessment Commission meeting that they would receive that notice?
In the ordinance, I'm not sure if it does that. I know for us, I think it was 15 days prior to that. I think it's a policy that we would probably follow suit with that. It would make sense for us to provide sufficient notice for all parties to be involved with that, and normally it'd be, I think, we've estimated to be something like August of next year to do so. So I could convey the message that we would give sufficient notice similar to what we have now if it's not specified. That only makes sense.
Another question we would have is the process of determining the true improvement to our property. Is, are we involved in that process? I mean, is there a physical observation of our property with whoever's going to make that final determination so that we're there at the same time?
With respect to your question, I know the city engineer reviews it and provides a recommendation, and you could correct me, Mr. Coleen, on there. You'll be notified of that and be able to have a say at the meeting to either agree or disagree with that assessment, you know, to have testimony just like you're having today. So you will have your opportunity to agree with it or disagree, but at least you'll have your opportunity to say at the meeting.
And just to make things clear, you know, in your letter that you sent, in no way were you opposed to the development and business carrying on. It was purely how much you were being assessed that was under question.
Correct. The assessment and the true value... The assessment and the true value to our property.
You bet.
Thank you, Ole.
Mr. President, just two matters. The notice provision in the ordinance is 15 days, so the notice would have to be mailed to property owners at least 15 days prior to the hearing. So, you would have at least that notice. And the other thing that I would note is those, we do have somewhat of a history of those valuations changing at the Special Assessment Commission meeting. We had one not too long ago, a month or two ago, where those values were changed by the Special Assessment Commission in response to some owner concerns. So, there is that history at least that we have as well.
Mr. President, which I'm hearing you say that the process is working. That's the way it should work.
Right.
Yeah. I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Coleen, but I think that when a protest gets here and the final approval is made by this board, that assessments can only be lowered and not increased.
That is correct, yes.
You know, I don't have a problem approving these two resolutions tonight, but I do think we need some philosophical conversation with staff and us, whoever. I don't know who should be a part of that, if we need a group to sit down. And I'm talking about this specific project I'm talking about. Seems like we need a little more conversation before this actually gets to the Assessment Commission, as informal as that may be.
Would that conversation also involve changes to our impact fee program? I know just in brief conversations with the city engineer that I think you're close to bringing a proposal to the commission for kind of changing that program. And it's something we talked about several months ago, that we perhaps needed some changes there.
President Johnson, I think that is include, or you are correct. We do have some recommendations that we bring forth to the commission. Also, on a related topic, there's a third item that we could discuss as well, and that's bringing infrastructure to the developed areas that have been recently annexed, especially on the north side. We may experience some of that same issues on the south side, on the annexation that's been requested this evening. So, that is something that we need to talk about as a city and to figure out philosophically how we're going to service those developed properties with city infrastructure, and who's going to pay and how much. So, there's certainly several topics that we could discuss at a meeting.
But, Mr. Brown, just so we're clear, if we act favorably on these resolutions tonight, we're in no way setting any special assessment amounts at this point.
Understood, yeah, we're good there, so.
As long as you have adequate notice and the opportunity to be involved in what the final figures are, you're comfortable with us moving forward with it as well?
Yeah, as long as they're input, and that's, hopefully, that's a way, we overestimated what it's going to be, but, yeah, we're fine. Thank you.
Is there anyone else with an affected property here that would like to speak? Okay. Well, then, we have two ordinances. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there is someone. Oh, excuse me.
Mr. Johnson and Commissioner, Tracy Toos with Dickinson Energy Park. We also got a letter of protest in, and it was too late to get in, and we'll further with the Special Assessment Commission. We don't disagree with the development, of course, but we were assessed to the tune of about $400,000, and we don't have access to 29th. They put 29th Street approximately seven feet higher than our property, so we have to access from 4th and 2nd Street, which is within North Industries and our own development. So, we have no access to the south, and we have no way to stub in water and sewer. So, that is why we are protesting the value of the assessment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Toos. Anybody else? Okay, well, then, there are two resolutions here, 61 and 62. Before I ask for a motion, are there any other comments by city commissioners regarding this topic? Would there be a motion then regarding Resolution 61?
We approve that resolution. Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, now we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Frenzel, Mr. Altman, Mr. Steiner, Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Then, the second phase is addressed in Resolution 62. Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 62?
Mr. President, I move we approve Resolution Number 62.
Second.
We have the motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner, Mr. Frenzel, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Altman, Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Mr. Cortan, do you have any comments regarding the enclosed reports?
Mr. President, Commissioner, the code enforcement report is attached within your commission packets. Just wanted to summarize some key items. We had mentioned earlier, or Mr. Kessel had mentioned earlier, about the building activity we had, and it's definitely indicative of September's meeting, if you've had a chance to take a look at it. It was a very busy month. Commercial structures, we are almost, we've almost doubled the figure from last year, 33 compared to 18 of last year, under new building permits. We are staying course with single-family structures, only three building permits behind. We've almost tripled the multifamily or row housing building permits from last year, which is indicative of a lot of multifamily, either R2 and R3 zoning. And we are at, we have increased, as of the date, the new building permits from 188 to 138 of last year. New building permit values are significantly increased from last year. Just a month of, just a month of September, we had $32,900,000 assessed value. This time last year, as of nine months, we only had $10,100,000. So, just within one month, we had three times the assessed value, and that just shows you the complexity and the large developments that we're having compared to last year. When you look at the figures, you can go down for the total, total building permit values. That is basically, just September is almost equal to last year for nine months, even on the assessed values. Under alterations and additions, we're three times the assessed value from last year at $17,271,000 compared to $5,601,000. And under fees remitted to the city, we are significantly ahead of last year at $538,000 compared to $345,000. This is definitely indicative of a very robust economy that we have. Our department, both engineering, both planning and building sides, we are very, very busy. There's the big push before the winter. More and more people are coming in, trying to get their projects moving forward before the winter happens. So, that's indicative of the big push that we had in September. And the last item I have for you is the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from September 21st, and those are for information purposes and available to answer any question you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Cortan. Any questions or comments for the city planner? All right, thank you. Any reports or comments by city commissioners? Not? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Mayor Johnson, commissioners, Rita, Ed, Sean, Matt, you're too quick for us. We were going to be here when he did the announcement on the Starfire Corporation. This is Lee Olton, I just want you to meet him, and if you have any questions for the development on the south side, he's there.
Oh, okay, welcome. You're the developer on that 128 acres that we talked about earlier in the meeting?
Yes, we weren't here. I apologize for being late to the meeting, but we weren't, we weren't here earlier, but yes, we are. 124 acres, I believe it is.
124, okay. And can you tell us a little bit about yourself, where you're from?
We're from Salt Lake City, Utah, and we've done quite a few developments in apartments and commercial developments in the state of Utah and some of the surrounding states as well. We're anxious to get started and, you know, try to move forward with this project and, you know, looking forward to working with you.
Okay, well, welcome to Dickinson. Any comments or questions here?
So, I assume you must be looking at plating over the winter and some construction in the spring? Is that the idea?
Yes, that's the idea. We'd like to get the annexation in as quickly as possible and get some plating done as soon as the surveying's complete, and try to get that in as soon as possible.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the commission? Not? Then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
We have the motion.